Good evening, we're ready to begin. The Planning Commission meeting has been called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be broadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll make the Commission aware that Commissioner Evans may be a little late or may not attend tonight, but Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Chair Goines?
Present.
Vice Chair Trowbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Trusdale?
Present.
Commissioner Simon?
Present.
Commissioner Dunham?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process. If appropriate, please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Is there a motion for the minutes of the March 27th Planning Commission meeting?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion on the floor, please cast your votes. And that motion carries. Any item from the Planning Commission staff and/or applicant that wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
Mr. Chairman, we have one item, item number 10, General Plan Amendment 21, I'm sorry, 27135. I request to hold this item in advance till the May 22nd Planning Commission meeting by the applicant.
Motion on the housekeeping items?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended by staff.
Does anybody want to speak on this item? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, please cast your vote. Moving on to our consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a Commission member or applicant so desires. We only have one item, so I'll open it up. Item 6, TMP 27005, applicant owner Becky L. Stein requests for a tentative map for a nine-lot, single-family residential subdivision on the southwest corner of Leon Avenue and Rosado Way.
This item is in order and recommend approval.
This is a public hearing, anybody like to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, since it's on the consent agenda, it's not a public...
Not a public? Okay.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 6, tentative map 27005 as presented, with subject to all conditions.
Motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
One motion, one vote. The following are items that may be considered in one motion or one vote. They are considered routine, non-public and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearing will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we need to remove all three items from the agenda as Public Works has some amended conditions to read into the record for all three.
We'll pull those items, and we'll start by opening item 7, VAC 27033, public hearing, applicant owner GNLV Corporation petition to vacate a 480-foot portion of First Street and a 220-foot portion of Carson Avenue at Bridger Avenue at First Street.
Mr. Chairman, this item is in order, and Public Works has some amended conditions to add.
This is a public hearing item, anybody for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, sorry, me, Public Works?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gina Van Glass with Public Works. Unfortunately, three standard conditions were left off, so I do need to request that we add those in tonight. The first one being, all development shall be in conformance with code requirements and design standards of all city departments. The second condition we would like to add reads, reservation of easements for the facilities of the various utility companies, together with reasonable ingress thereto and egress therefrom, shall be provided if required. And lastly, we would like to add, if the order of vacation is not recorded within one year after approval by the City of Las Vegas or an extension of time is not granted by the Planning Director, then approval will terminate and a new petition must be submitted, and the applicant has agreed to these additional conditions.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. The applicant has agreed to those conditions. I'll entertain a motion at this time on item 7.
Make a motion regarding item number 7, Vacation 27033. Recommend approval, subject to all staff conditions with the addition of the three additional ones just read into the record.
Thank you. Motion on the floor for approval of item 7, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Item 8, SDR...
That goes forward to Council on May 7.
Item 8, SDR 27045, applicant Las Vegas Valley Water District owner, the City of Las Vegas requests for a site development plan review for a 1,064-square-foot utility installation at 10018 Alta Drive. Staff?
This item is for a non-habitable sodium hydrochlorate disinfectant system and electrical system. There is no office space and will be serviced minimally by the Water District. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Public Works?
The change that we would like to request is removal of conditions number 9 and number 10.
Is the applicant in agreeance?
We concur with staff recommendations.
Thank you. Public hearing, is anybody here to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, we'll need the applicant to put his name on the record also.
Pardon me, Bronson Mack, 1,001 South Valley View, here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Bronson. Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Make a recommendation regarding Agenda Item Number 8, Site Development Review 27045. Recommend approval, subject to all staff conditions with the deletions of number 9 and 10 with the subsequent renumbering as required.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the Office of the City Clerk.
Item 9, SDR 27057, applicant owner Nicholas Woolridge requests for a site development plan review for the conversion of an existing residence into an office with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer standards to allow a 0-foot front landscape buffer where 15 feet is required, a 1-foot rear landscape buffer where 8 feet is required, and a 0-foot landscape buffer along the north and south property lines where 5 feet is required at 312 South Jones Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, the waivers requested are similar and in compliance with other waivers granted along this section for these conversions along Jones. Staff does recommend approval. Public Works does have one amended condition, I believe.
Thank you. While Public Works is reading that, if the applicant's in the audience, could you please come forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. We'd like to modify condition of approval number 16 to change the reference to require the joint access agreement to the north instead of the south. So the condition would read, provide a copy of a recorded joint access agreement between this site and the adjoining parcel to the north prior to the issuance of any permits. They have provided that documentation, however, we do like to memorialize that as a condition for record-keeping and so forth.
Thank you. Applicant, could you state your name and address, and if you agree to the amended condition?
Yes, Paul Lemus, 312 South Jones, and we do agree.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anybody for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions from the board, or entertain a motion?
In regards to item number 5, Site Development Review 27057, I make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions with the modification to number 16.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote.
Did you say, oh, I think you said 9.
And that motion on item 9 has been for approval.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal to the Office of City Clerk within 10 days.
Moving on to our public hearing items, item 11, 12, and 13 are related items.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'm going to need to abstain on these four items because I have a, I work with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers 357, and it might be inappropriate for me to take action on this item.
Thank you. Related items 11 through 14. Item 11, GPA 27069, applicant owner IBEW Local 357 requests to amend a portion of the southeast sector plan of the general plan from M medium-density residential to SC service commercial adjacent to the northwest corner of Lamb Boulevard and Harris Avenue. Item 12, ZON 27068, for a rezoning from C1 Limited Commercial and R MHP Residential Mobile Manufactured Home Park to C1 Limited Commercial. Item 13, VAR 27067, for a variance to allow 219 parking spaces where 277 are required for proposed commercial development. Item 14, SDR 27066, for a site development plan review for a 35,000-square-foot office building and meeting hall. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the proposed land use change and zoning are compatible with the surrounding area. In regards to the variance, staff finds that the unusual nature of the use is grounds for granting the variance as the, it is a limited membership use and is recommending approval of variance. In regards to the site plan, staff finds that it's compatible and in compliance with Title 19 and recommends approval.
Thank you. Applicants?
My name's Tom Stetson, I'm president of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Union 357, representative for the applicant. My address is 6,005 Fawn Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. We do agree with the recommendation.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? And that will entertain a motion on item 11.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 11, please cast your vote. That motion has been approved with Vice Chairman Trowbridge abstaining. Item 12?
With regards to item 12, motions for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion on the floor on item 12, for approval, please cast your vote. That motion has passed, showing Vice Chairman Trowbridge abstaining. Item 13?
With regards to item 13, motions for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval, item 13, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed with Vice Chairman Trowbridge abstaining.
Aye, aye, okay.
Thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you.
14, 14.
Item 14.
Also, move for approval on item 14, subject to all staff's recommendations, conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval on item 14, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed with Commissioner Trowbridge abstaining as well.
And all matters go forward to the City Council on May 7.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing items 15 and 16. Item 15, GPA 27207, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, requests for a general plan amendment from ML medium-low-density residential to PROS, Parks Recreation Open Space on the east side of Sand Hill Road adjacent to the north side of the Las Vegas Wash. Item 16, ZON 27211, for a rezoning from RE Residential Estates to CV Civic. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this request meets the intent and policies of the objectives of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan and the parks element, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. Yes, sir. State your name and address.
Joseph Webb, 1427 North Gateway Road.
Thank you.
We have a problem with this park because we have so many, so much traffic on our private road that people don't recognize as a private road, which is Gateway Road, and we would request that they put a climbless fence separating our properties from the park. We have a lot of trouble with graffiti, we have broken fences, we have police activity there constantly with supposedly like gang members and illegals with guns getting picked up in the backyard, stolen vehicle abandonments on that road, and if they're going to proceed with this park, I would appreciate if they could put a sign on our road that says, "No Access to Park, Dead End, Residents Only," something to let people know. Because we all have telephones and we will inundate the city for trespassers. We constantly have them in there anyway, and we suspect, not gang activity, a drug activity on that road down further. The fence has been torn down. We discussed it at the public meeting, we discussed it at the public meeting like two weeks ago over at the school, the high school on Harrell Street, and I thought we got it across, I know they're not going to just cancel it, but we'd like it in the record that there are some stipulations, and the main guy that was supposed to speak tonight had to work, so I'm the second neighborhood watch guy.
Very good. Your comments on the record, I'm going to defer to Director Wheeler.
If I may, yes, their comments are reflected in the staff report, that there were citizens that came to the meeting and that there were security concerns. The issues that you mentioned this evening will be made part of the minutes, and there will be a subsequent action when the actual site plan comes in. Those in the neighborhood will be notified, and these sorts of issues with regard to how it's designed and the signage and the fencing will all be addressed at that time.
Okay, yeah, because we had brought up the problem with lighting, they want to put a hiking, biking trail along there.
Yes.
And I talked to even a friend of mine in zoning, said she doesn't think it's a good idea because of the neighborhood is so violent, we'll put it that way, that there'll be muggings, shootings, killings, robberies, just people trying to walk or ride down that trail. It's, we're on one street of horse property, we all have half acre or more, and we're like right in the middle of apartments and homes.
But when it comes back through the design review process, you and the neighbors will have some input as to where you would suggest a fence or signage goes, and at that time they'll address it and...
Yeah, we thought that they might have put the, brought it to the Planning Commission's attention from the meeting, the neighborhood meeting.
It is, it is, and I know.
It is, it is.
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions, just of Mr. Webb.
Yes.
If Gateway's a private road and it's paved, who maintains that?
It isn't paved.
It isn't paved?
No.
So do you have a homeowners association or anything in there to...
Just Neighborhood Watch.
Okay, so, but it is a private road?
Yes.
And just FYI, the City of Las Vegas cannot go on that private property and put signs up, so maybe instead of using all of your cellphone minutes, you can be a little more constructive and put your nickels and dimes together and put a sign, get a sign together, signs are not that expensive, to post those on yourself, because if it is private, you have the right to do that.
Well, it was a city road at one time until the city gave eight feet of our road to the builder next door so they could put in more houses, and the road was turned over to us to maintain.
So it has been vacated, whether it was a city's or not, it is now private property?
As far as we know, yeah.
Okay, so we, being the city, me, don't have jurisdiction to go on there and put the signs that you want, so again, to be a little on the, on the offensive side or the proactive side, not offensive, signs are not that expensive. I mean, you guys could probably, like I said, pull your nickels and dimes together and put up those signs.
Okay, now where the sign board is, is on city property. It's right at the corner.
Pull it off, put it on private property. Just say, "Sign, no entrance, private property."
No, it's got a big post up there with the city Owens, Owens and Gateway Road.
Put it on private property.
I'm not going to be the one to tear it down.
In addition to...
I know where I'd end up.
I guess you and I are, I'm not quite understanding you and you're not quite understanding me, which is fine, but just, we can't go on private property.
It's an understanding problem.
But your comments are noted, and at the site development review, you'll have ample time to discuss all of the merits.
Good enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments or questions on this item? We'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion from the board.
Regarding item number 15, General Plan Amendment 27207, recommend approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 15, please cast your vote. That motion has passed. Item 16?
Regarding item number 16, zoning 27211, recommend approval.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. And that item has passed.
Those matters go forward to Council on May 7.
Items 17 through 22 are related items. Item 17, MOD 27044, applicant owner HITW Douglas Family Trust requests for a major modification of the Town Center land use plan from UCTC Urban Center Mixed Use Town Center to GCTC General Commercial Town Center, special land use designation at the northwest corner of Durango Drive and Deer Springs Drive. Item 18, SUP 27046, special use permit for a proposed 5,376-square-foot liquor establishment, tavern. Item 19, SUP 27047, for a special use permit for a proposed 3,200-square-foot restaurant with drive-through. Item 20, SUP 27048, for a special use permit for a proposed 3,275-foot square-foot convenience store with fuel pumps. Item 21, special use permit 27049, for a special use permit for a proposed beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment in conjunction with a convenience store. Item 22, SDR 27051, for a site development plan review for a 41,741-square-foot retail and office development with waivers to allow an 8-foot landscape buffer where a 15-foot buffer is required on Durango Drive, a 15-foot setback where a 20-foot setback is required for a gas station, and Town Center landscape finger requirements within the parking area. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the request to modify the land use plan, staff finds that the surrounding land uses are urban center, urban center mixed-use town center, and finds that the request is not in compliance to the Town Center standards and is recommending denial. In regards to the special use permits for the alcohol uses, staff is supporting those as those are permitted in the urban center land use designation. In regards to the drive-through special use permits in the site plan, staff finds that the requested waivers are not in compliance with the goals and trends of the Town Center and recommend denial.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on these items because I do represent the property owner on their real estate deals.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Gary Leobold, 2592 Canadian Goose Circle in Henderson. I'd just like to start out and talk a little bit about the site plan itself, if we could go to the overhead, that would be helpful. The project, as laid out right now, this is north to the right, we've got it rotated 90 degrees. The project is a 5.1-acre site and is consisting of a proposed Walgreens on the south end at the Deer Springs intersection. There would be a drive-through restaurant next to that, a tavern with some retail uses, a convenience store with fuel pumps, and office development on the back. It's all one-story development, and I just wanted to start with, we've got basically six requests in front of us. One is a major modification, there are four special use permits in the site plan review. The special use permits deal with these items. The first one is, in no particular order, the restaurant with the drive-through, that requires a special use permit, the tavern requires a special use permit, the C store, because of the fuel pumps, requires a special use permit, a C store on its own without fuel pumps, just like a restaurant without the drive-through, would not require a special use permit. And then the fourth one is a beer/wine off-sale and coolers special use permit within the C store. Staff, in the staff reports they prepared for these items, have recommended approval on the tavern use, which has been previously approved on the site, and have supported the beer/wine cooler special use permit. We do thank them for those recommendations and agree with all staff conditions on those matters. So really, what we come down to is a major modification, the site plan, and two of the special use permits that we are going to focus talking on. The major modification we're requesting will take this site from its current designation under the Town Center Development Standards Manual, special land use categories from what it currently is, UCTC Urban Center, to GCTC, which is a general commercial category. There are a number of reasons why we're asking for this. The restaurant with the drive-through and the convenience store with the fuel pumps are not allowed under the UCTC and are allowed under GC, that's obviously one reason why we're asking for it, but also, under the, under the UCTC, there's a minimum two-story requirement, and obviously, a development of this nature would be, you know, not developed at a two-story level. I don't think that, based on the history on the site where we did have a multi-story development in the past that has since lapsed, in part due to concerns from people in the neighborhood about multi-story buildings, that that would be an issue. These are all going to be one-story buildings, and so, let me just go to the mod for a second here. As staff talks about, as the reasons for denial on this, that we need to have a compatible mixture of land uses, that we need to encourage employment opportunities and provide goods and services for the area. I believe we are doing all those, it's true that in terms of a mixture of land uses, we don't have residential, but we do have a range of retail, we have service uses, we have office uses, and I think obviously we're encouraging employment opportunities and we are providing goods and services within the neighborhood, so I think we're compatible on all those grounds. They talk about things that could be included under the GC, things like new and used car sales, highway commercial, or resort and recreational facilities. We're obviously not interested in providing any of those things, the site at five acres is not of a scale that would be appropriate for those things, and so, you know, we don't think that those arguments are really, hold a huge amount of merit. I think what the concern comes down to is that on the site, we have those drive-through uses, basically, it's a drive-through for Walgreens and the drive-through for the restaurant, and I don't know if you could focus on this map here, if that will be, I know that's the scale, that's really hard to see if we zoom in, that's great. Well, it looks a little blurry, but everything looks blurry to me, so, but if we look at this, I just wanted to point out in the area, here's our site right here, and within the immediate area, which is really the core area of Town Center as it was envisaged in the plan and, you know, as it's been built out, we have a shopping center here, suburban style shopping center with Kohl's as the anchor, we have the hospital site here, which has an eight-story office, or sorry, a four-story office building and the eight-story hospital itself, that's all that's been developed on there at this time. And then up in this area, we have the Montecito Marketplace, which is again a suburban style shopping center, nicely landscaped, Smith's is the anchor. I want to just point out, all these red dots here, this is a drive-through, it's a bank with a drive-through, this is a Burger King with a drive-through, another bank with a drive-through, Pollo Loco with a drive-through, Starbucks with a drive-through, there's another restaurant in here with a drive-through, there's a convenience store here that has fuel pumps, 24-hour, and it's a car wash. We have another drive-through here, which is another bank, and we have a drive-through here, it's a drive-through restaurant in Arby's, and then, within this... a drive-through restaurant in Arby's. And then, within this three-story apartment complex here, the one building at the front that's closest to our property, on the main floor, has some retail uses, including a convenience store. So there are quite a number of, of drive-through activities in the area, and we're definitely not setting a trend where, I think we're providing some services and some uses in the area that will be beneficial to the neighborhood. I'd also like to talk a little bit about the, the waivers that we're asking for with our site plan review. There basically are three waivers. One is a requirement along Durango here, to have not only a five-foot amenity zone and a nine-and-a-half-foot sidewalk, which we are providing all the way along here, but to then onsite have another 15 feet of landscaped area. And we have provided that all the way along here, but because of the requirement for a right turn lane westbound onto Deer Springs, this has been narrowed down to about eight-and-a-half feet instead of the 15 feet. So the extent of the waiver is this area here, not the rest of it. The second waiver has to do with this area here. We do meet the requirement, the base requirement for the, the width for landscaping here, except that, where you have fuel pumps, they ask for another five feet, and we don't have that five feet. So the waiver is in this area here. The third waiver is, within the parking field, we are required to have a tree for every six spaces, and it's placed on a finger or, or on an island. And to maximize our parking, we've provided those trees, not on the fingers or on islands, but on adjacent land, adding those to any other landscape requirement that we have. And in fact, within our buffer area that we've got onsite, that's required by code, that does not have a, a tree planting requirement, we have a total of 36 trees within that area. So our total amount of trees, taking everything into account on the site, exceeds code standard for landscaping. I'd just like to turn over, this is the owner of the property, Douglas Hitt. I'm sure Mr. Hitt would have some comments, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Douglas Hitt. I reside at 2208 Aliyah Court. And I'm here tonight to show you the project and ask for your approval. I've owned this property for almost 20 years now, and have been through the Town Center standards, the original vision, which I tried to make happen with Two Towers back in June of '05. It was just, something I cannot build in this marketplace. This is the only project that banks will finance and the, and the, and the most feasible project for me to develop. And we have tenants that are interested in, in place, and I feel it's a good project for the neighborhood. And I do wanna make it a project that, when people drive by, they say, "What a great-looking center it is. It's gonna be landscaped very well." I even wanna consult the Springs Preserve on the landscaping. I wanna do it to a standard above the rest. So I'm here to ask for your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anybody forward gets this item, please come forward. Mr. Leabold, keep them. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I would like to address the, the two-story waiver that they're asking for, and I don't think it's appropriate in, in Town Center. I don't have any problem with the Walgreens, because Walgreens, their buildings look like they're two-story. They have a facade out there that's got a Walgreens, glassed-in Walgreens thing. So I have no problem with that. But like, on the, on the, on the, on the liquor store there, it seems like they could put the offices and storage on the second floor, or whatever. But we really need to make this look dense, and the way you do that is, is two-story stuff, and that's what I'm, what I'm here. The same thing with the convenience store. There's no way, there's no reason that they cannot put storage and offices on, on the second floor and open up the, the main floor for more, more floor space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? I'll chime in right quick. I, you know, this is a difficult one. But I hear you, Mr. Leabold, talking about the, pointing out all of the drive-throughs that are in the area, and it, it seems like you just wanna add to the same thing that's out there. And, and that's where I have my concern. If you look at the Town Center, Urban Center Mixed Use Guidelines, it says it's there to enable development with imaginative site and building design and maximize the use of the property. But I heard you and Mr. Hitt today talk about landscaping. It's over landscape. It looks like the preserve. But I didn't hear anything about imaginative site and building designs. And that's what I'm looking for. Because to me, this just looks like any other corner strip mall with a C store, Walgreens, drive-through, fast-food restaurant sitting right next to a tavern. That's what it looks like.
If I can comment on your comments, I, I understand what you're saying, and, but what I would, what I would say to that would be, if you have a look at Montecito Marketplace, which is the one north of the, of the hospital, you know, it's, in every sense of the word, it would be considered a suburban standard. It's, you know, has those uses. In fact, I think it's entitled for maybe as many as 10 drive-throughs. It's only the, the ones that I mentioned there now. But, you know, it's a very attractive center, the way it's been designed. You know, they've, they've divided up either with articulation or with color. They've divided up the facades. They've put, you know, second-story elements on to, to make it look less horizontal. And, and the landscaping is important, too, around the perimeter. They've done a really nice job. And I think our intent would be to, to try to, Doug can talk to this as well. Our intent would be to try to give it that urban interest. You know, the, the uses are, you know, serving the markets we've talked about. But I think the visual look of the building can definitely be done in a way, and I think that's our intent. It, it improves value of the property, and that's what we would wanna do.
I'd like to comment on that. I, I wanna make the project actually look more eye-appealing than Montecito Place, with some very nice finishes to complement the landscaping. And they are not shown in the elevations here. But if you're familiar with, up on West Charleston, near the Costco Mall up there, that, that type of look with the, with the stone and so forth, that's, that's what I'm aiming for in this project.
Okay. I'm, I'm a good God-fearing man, and I go by faith and not by sight, but I think I need to see this.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a, a concern that you need to comment about, and that is the onsite traffic flow seems to be downright dangerous. When I see the exit from the fast food going head-on into the major entrance, and also the entrance to the Walgreens drive-through coming right off that thing, you've got a, what appears to be a, just an unsafe condition that you're, you're asking for here on terms of traffic flow and the pattern. In addition, comment about the traffic pattern, it seems like two of your primary entrances are coming in off of 80-foot streets, which turns them into a lot busier than what an 80-foot street is normally designed for. You know, some of the other sites that you cite as having drive-throughs in the neighborhood, they're off 100 or 120-foot feet of streets, and they're, they're designed to handle the type of traffic it needs to sustain businesses that are dependent on vehicular traffic. Your access is really not.
Any more questions? Commissioner Donald?
Here we go. I voted instead of turning my mic on. I'm sorry. I'm gonna disclose that I met with Mr. Leabold and Mr. Hitt in my office prior to this meeting today. And honestly, it's, it, it comes down to me for a compatibility issue, and I was kinda riding the fence, not knowing which way to lean. And then, tonight I get here, and I mean, I had received some emails and, and one phone call on this. And tonight I get here and I see that there's a total of 68 protests that were mailed in. And it's a little difficult to tell exactly what was going on with what, because some people responded only to the modifications. Some people only responded to, you know, one SUP, another SUP, and site development review and things like that. But it boils down to that there's a total of 68 people that don't like this. And, and like I told you guys earlier, I mean, the convenience store people that I know and talk to, they wanna come here. I mean, they think that that's a hot, a hot corner, which tells me that, one, hey, it's great for a C store, because they, that it's gonna get used. But the problem is, and it might even be used by those people that are, that are mailing in these protests, but the problem is, is we have these protests, and we have a major modification here, and we have these variances that we're asking for on this thing. And I think what it really boils down to is the fact of the compatibility with the, the convenience store and the gas pumps. And I know that the convenience store is allowed. It's the gas, the outside gas pumps with the lights and the 24-hour operations, all that, that kind of stuff that's not. And so, it would really be a lot easier for me to support this thing if the gas pumps were not on there. I think that the fast food drive-through, it's tolerable. I mean, we've got stuff north of that, like you and I discussed. We've got stuff like that south of that. And, and, and maybe we could, if we move some stuff around, maybe move the Walgreens to the, to the north and move things around, it could work a little better. We could get away with some of those. And we could get the planting width that we need. But, but honestly, I'm, I'm gonna have a real hard time supporting this with, with that many protests that I saw tonight. And it's, and it boils down to, I think, the gas pumps alone. And I don't know that a convenience store would go in there without the gas pumps. So maybe it comes down to, okay, is the C store gonna live or not? So I'm, I'm gonna kinda leave it up to you guys, because you know how I feel now, as to, as to what you wanna do, whether you wanna maybe take this back and massage it, add some, you know, maybe, I've said my piece on this, and, and unfortunately, Mr. Hitt, the only thing that we have to go, go on when you're talking about an upscale project of these are what we see. So, and, and again, like the chairman says, we hear a lot of that, and I'm not putting anybody down to that, but we get a lot of promises up here, you know? And so, I have to have something that, in a year or six months, when you're applying for a building permit, that Margot's people can, can say, "Okay, hey, this is what the guy wants to build. This is what we're supposed to do. This is not, he told us something different, but oh, well, you know, it comes down to the legality issue." And unfortunately, that's what we have to deal with. So I'm gonna leave it up to you guys as to, as to whether you think that redesigning this might work, holding it. I don't know. But I think you, you know my position tonight. I just, I just could not support it as it sits with what we have in front of us.
Any more questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Steinman?
I think this is, project will be okay on a slight redesign, maybe a major redesign. I do not like the crisscross of the drive-throughs. It is truly a crisscross there. Exiting out, crossing over where people go into Walgreens. It's just, it's not good. It needs to be in another part of that lot. The gas pumps, hey, it's along Durango. I don't really have that much trouble with the situation, but I think you need to redesign for flow here. I think that's my biggest issue. And if you wanna promise some of the things relative to what the building's gonna look like, put it down. Let's see it. Let's see what it looks like. And I think then, much of this will make a lot more sense. So I would suggest to do that myself. And I would support it if you go that way. So maybe you wanna let it hold off for 30 days and do a little looksee. That would be my suggestion.
Commissioner Steinman and also Commissioner Trowbridge, since you both raised the same point, this design that we have here for the drive-through, I just wanted to let you know that we went through a number of iterations on this. Unfortunately, Town Center Code doesn't allow us to wrap a drive aisle around three sides of the building, so that would have been another waiver we would have had to ask for. And then otherwise, it would be a matter of entering at the rear and coming out over here. And, you know, that had its own difficulties as well. So we understand what you're saying about flow, and, you know, it's, it seemed to be the best of, of all the options we considered.
It may work better on the south end of this property, potentially, by itself, but down at that end, with Walgreens more towards the middle. I don't know. But I don't think those two drive-throughs need to be conflicting. I think that's your issue.
Right. Regarding the C store, gas pumps are, are very important to the operators for obvious reasons. And without the gas pumps, I, I would have to determine what would be the highest and best use for that corner. That's what I have determined would be a C store. So I don't think I can get an operator in there if I don't get the gas pump approval. And the operator we're looking at is Terrell Herbst.
Who's just down the street also, correct? Is that they up in that area?
No, they're, they're, no, they're not down the street. You have a fast, you have a fast Freddy's on Elkhorn and Montecito. Then we have a Sinclair on Centennial Parkway and Durango.
But they want this one, because they want to catch all the right turns going on the 215.
Right. It's, it's on the way to work.
Yeah.
So, you know, and a, a coffee use would probably do fairly well there, too, on the way to work.
If I could just throw in, too, the, on this Hitt family court on the north side where those apartments are located, there's a solid wall that runs the full length of that. There's no access. In fact, there's not even a sidewalk. It's a solid wall with a, a narrow landscape area and then the curb. And part of that wall is actually the back of garages, so part of it's six feet, but parts of it are, I don't know, 10 or 11 feet. And then there's quite a wide parking area before you actually get to any of those buildings. So the, the, the impact is really, you know, gonna be minimal. Very few of those apartments are really gonna have direct exposure because of those garages and the fence that's along there.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Just briefly, I spoke with you this morning, Mr. Hitt, and it was a pleasure. And when I spoke with you, we had one or two protests. And when I walked in this afternoon, I had this. So I don't wanna go against my word, but I do have to agree with my other commissioners that it just needs a little bit more work, and you would certainly have my support on this project. Simply because I think when you take the old Las Vegas families that are putting together this project, I know ultimately you're gonna end up with a great result. I just think it needs a little work and a little massaging. And I also agree that we need to see something more tangible. But with the people you have behind you, I know you want it to look great, because you've lived here a long time and you love where you live. So I look forward to the next peek at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Where do we wanna go? You wanna hold it? Do you wanna motion on the thing?
It's somewhat difficult for us to respond. I mean, to our knowledge, we had, you know,
according to the staff report, I think it was maybe five protests. So all of a sudden now, there's a great, larger number of unspecified protests that we don't know what they're, what the concern is. So it's really hard to respond to that.
If I could jump in and make a suggestion, it'd probably be in your best interest to, to hold it, work on the onsite traffic flow, traffic management issue, and perhaps have another meeting with, with the neighbors out there, where you could show them some drawings, to show them what your commitments are. And it might resolve some of those significant protests, because as it stands now, they make a pretty good argument where it's gonna have a negative impact on, on the neighborhood. But I, I know that's not your intent, and I know those things could be corrected.
Right. Well, we actually had a neighborhood meeting on this, and we showed them this plan.
Yeah, it didn't seem to work, though, did it?
Well, we, we were compliant. We did everything we were supposed to do for the neighborhood meeting.
Except win them over.
Well, we had maybe, what, a dozen people there?
Well, I have a list right here. We had 12 people show up. So, and...
I'm somewhat surprised they're not here tonight on a project like this. And I noticed that in, in the, the postcards that came back, SUP 27049 and SDR 27051 are on the same postcard. So therefore, if there's 12 of those postcards, it's shown as 12 against 49 and 12 against 51, that looks like 24. In reality, it's only 12. Not only, that's another interpretation. But I think that's what's happened here, is that all these postcards have, it appears to be dual numbers on them, and therefore, it compounds the size of these protests. And so somebody needs to go through and look at these, see how many people are the same addresses on different postcards, and really cull this debt.
That would be very helpful. And then, you know, to the extent that it takes the time to check off "I oppose it" and put it back in the mailbox, you know, some people have that level of opposition to it. So...
But that neighborhood up there is, can, does do their opposition, and they do it very well. But they usually show up in numbers out here to protest. They're very active out there. And I'm surprised they're not here.
We're surprised, and we were unaware there was that many protests. Especially if they're having a neighborhood meeting.
Have you gentlemen decided whether you're gonna, gonna hold it, or you wanna go for a motion?
Could you give us 30 seconds?
15.
20.
13.
We'll go ahead and hold it for 30 days.
I'll entertain a motion on item... I'll entertain a motion on item 17 through 22.
Make a motion to hold these items for 30 days to the May 8th meeting?
Motion on the floor to hold to the May 8th meeting. Please cast your vote. And that hasn't been approved, with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Item 23, ZON 27075, applicant owner, Down Syndrome Organization of Southern Nevada, requests for rezoning from PR Professional Office and Parking to O. Office at 5300 Vegas Drive. Item 24, SUP 27077, for a special use permit for a proposed social service provider. Staff?
The requested rezoning is in conformance with the general plan, and staff recommends approval in regards to the companion item, the special use permit. Staff finds that that is a compatible use in this area and recommends approval also.
Thank you. Applicant?
Jason Kappel, 2727 South Rambo, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We'd just like to thank staff for all their help with this project, and we concur with all staff's conditions and respectfully ask for your approval of this item.
Thank you. If this is a public hearing, anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions, or a motion from the board?
Next motion.
Motion, if you're ready. On agenda item number 23, ZON 27075, move for approval, subject to, well, just move for approval, no condition.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed. Item 24.
Item 24 is SUP 27077. I will move for approval, subject to the conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
All matters go forward to council on May 7th.
Thank you.
Related items, 25, 26, and 27. Item 25, ZON 27079, applicant owner, Jim Marsh American Corporation, requests for rezoning from U. undeveloped TC Town Center to TC Town Center Zone on the east side of Riley Street, 275 feet south of Centennial Parkway. Item 26, WVR 27425, for a waiver of Title 18 dot 12 dot 130 to allow an existing private street to terminate without the required cul-de-sac. Item 27, SDR 27078, for a site development plan review for a parking lot and a waiver of the town center perimeter and parking lot landscape standards. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the request for rezoning to Town Center, staff finds that that's compatible with the 2020 master plan and is recommending approval. In regards to the waiver and the waivers on the site plan, staff finds that the requested waivers indicate the site is being overbuilt and does not support them and is recommending denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Paul San CC 6701 Dorita Avenue, Las Vegas, here for the owner.
All right.
We agree with staff's recommendation for the rezone, and we would like to discuss the other two items.
Continue.
The recommendation for denial on the cul-de-sac, per Title 18, cul-de-sacs are on private streets after 200 feet.
Okay.
I do have a copy of that title, if you'd like to...
I'll defer to Public Works on that.
Okay. So we request that that be approved.
Okay.
Rather than denial. On the item 27, it is our opinion that one of the recommendations, the denial for staff recommendation, was that we are not meeting landscaping requirements and some of the other town center requirements, such as the parking islands between six stalls, I believe the number is, per town center. This is going to be for a parking lot for Jim Marsh Auto.
So that doesn't mean...
Most importantly is as many parking spots as we get.
So what does that mean? It shouldn't look nice?
No, we're not saying that.
Well, that's what landscaping brings it out.
Yes, we've just, actually, we've tried to extend the number of parking stalls to approximately eight between parking islands. Other items were 20% landscaping for the used space. In our drafting and site analysis, we've come up with 16% instead of the 20%. Third item was trees in the parking islands. At the request of the owner, we would prefer not to do this, because trees can damage his cars, as far as blowing over, birds landing in the trees, scratching cars.
So we want a black asphalt parking lot?
No, the client is willing to allow shrubbery, just not trees, in the on-site parking areas.
Okay. Is that it?
I believe that is it.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against the item, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Follow, 240 North 19th Street. The problem is that the cars are going to cover up with shrubs that he's going to plant, so it's going to look like a sea of cars out there, the same thing. The other thing, in the initial photographs, they showed, the first one, I think, was a photo that had two beautiful houses in there, right there. And they're going to put a parking lot between two nice houses?
No, they're north of them, sir.
So these people are going to be looking at it?
There is a six-foot wall, I do believe.
Oh, okay, then he needs trees up there.
These people need some protection.
We have no problem with the trees along the south property line. It's just in these small parking aisles between the parking spaces.
Thank you. Close the public hearing. Comments, questions from the board? Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
If I may, is this expanded parking lot intended to serve as a storage lot for new vehicles?
Actually, in speaking with the client this morning, the south lot that will be abutting, the two residential properties, will be used for storage only. The northern corner, at the corner of Centennial and Riley, that is designed for the display and sale of cars.
And the, I would certainly be sympathetic to the elimination of the landscaping around the area that's going to be used just for storage of cars, with the understanding that it was just a storage area with a wall around it and the general public won't see it.
Yes, that is true. That will be.
But the other side, where the public is going to see, that's when the aesthetics become important.
The concern that the client and we have is that, put too many trees up, excuse me, that you'll be obscuring the view. And what's the purpose of a car lot but to...
Well, when you have two or three thousand cars, I don't think it's really difficult to know that that's a car lot, and I think Mr. Marsh has it pretty well. He's pretty visible out there, and I don't think anybody with any doubt would mistake that that's not a car dealership.
This is true. As I stated earlier, one of his main concerns is damaging to the cars because of the trees.
We have that all over the city, where we have trees in parking lots. And if you go up in Summerlin, I want to tell you, they are nice, and they provide shade and so on to the customers that use them. I don't find it damages my car when I park there for 20 minutes or a half hour. I don't know where this theory's coming from.
The bottom line is your client wants more parking spaces, and the bottom line is, we want the trees per code. So if I'm going to support this in Ward 6, it's going to have to meet code. Okay.
Any more questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Quinn?
I just wanted to say I agree with Commissioners Dunham. You go up Sahara and it's, you know, you see nothing but palm trees and trees and cars, and unfortunately, I'll have to agree with you, sir, on that.
I'll entertain a motion on item 25.
I guess if we're not going to get the trees that we want, the only appropriate action is to move for denial.
If I may?
Okay.
Make an observation that, again, the staff has recommended approval of the zoning. The waiver with regard to the cul-de-sac is at the will of the commission. It's really a rather...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the cul-de-sac.
With regard to the site plan, since it is a parking lot, and in this case, putting in the trees is not removing required parking, because it's just however much parking they get, were the commission to wish to do so, you could make a recommendation for approval of the site plan and add a condition that there shall be no waiver of Town Center perimeter and parking lot landscape standards. Therefore, they would have to make that correction, and you would be going forward, and they simply have to eliminate the parking in order to, whatever parking necessary, in order to meet standards.
Okay, that's fine with me. I was hoping that the applicant would move forward with that, but I didn't see any motion toward that at all. But, so is that what you want to do?
That sounds acceptable.
Okay.
In that case, you would request elimination of the waiver application on the SDR. Is that correct?
Yes. Great, now I think we're moving in the right direction. So let's see, on item 25, move for approval with staff, per staff's recommendations.
Thank you. Motion on the floor for approval, item 25. Please cast your vote.
And on item 26, for the waiver, move for approval...
I hate to interrupt, Chairman, through you.
Go ahead, Jena.
I have a minor change. It was just a typo in, in condition number three, we referenced on the last sentence, the termination of the private, the public street. It should actually be the termination of the private street. So we would like to revise condition number three to just change that word from public to private.
So I will amend my motion on item 26, per Public Works, with a recommendation for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval with amended condition number three. Please cast your vote. That motion has passed.
And on item 27, move for approval, noting that the applicant has withdrawn the waiver for landscaping.
Right, and if I may, we would add a condition that no waiver of landscape requirements is allowed.
My motion is amended per comments, per Director Wheeler, for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
All matters go forward to council on May 7th.
Thank you. Item 28, SUP 27082, applicant owner, Cecil Properties, requests for a special use permit for a proposed second-hand dealer jewelry at 420 East Sahara Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I'm abstaining on this item as much as I do own an interest in property within the notice area.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area and satisfies the minimum conditions for approval for a special use permit, and approval is recommended.
Thank you. Applicant?
Lenny Scar, 3753 Howard Hughes Parkway, representing the applicant. The lady that has purchased this building has operated the Gold Exchange, which is directly across Las Vegas Boulevard from the DSC. She's been at that location for more than 12 years. She's leasing a small space there. She has had some concerns about what she has been allowed to do under a lease to maintain her safety, because she does work alone at this business, and has opted to purchase so that she has more control over the types of security measures she has at her store. And that's the reason she's moving to this location. I've read all of the staff's conditions. I agree with them, however, I do have a question about condition number two, which says, "Provide an additional 24-inch box tree at the front of the building for a total of two trees." And I know my picture doesn't look quite as good as the one that you have in your packet, but we have a palm, and I believe it's an ash. And I've heard differing things about which one of those may be causing some concern for staff, so I'd like some clarification as to which one of those, or if, you know, either doesn't count as a tree, or would you want us to remove and replace, or if we should want another one for a total of three trees. I just want to make sure I'm clear what's going to be expected of the client.
Okay, staff? Mr. Enkin?
As this matter goes forward to council, as required by code, we can certainly clarify that between now and then.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
And we will certainly do so.
Okay, and with that, I agree with the conditions and ask for your approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody for or against this? Please come forward. This tree here, Lenny, that I see here, looks like it's, it's got some leaves.
Chief of Lines? I, my name is Alan Richards. I own the property at 2321 Santa Rita, which is directly behind this property. I strongly disagree with this, and I oppose this, because I believe it has nothing but a negative impact on the neighborhood behind. It already has, and they haven't even opened. I don't think they have adequate parking in the front. They only have three to four spaces. On the side of the building, which borders Santa Rita, if they park on that, they actually, a full-size car will block the sidewalk and force pedestrians into the street. There's a lot of people that don't have cars in that neighborhood, and if they block that, it will force children and people into that street and into harm's way. I also disagree with, they've erected a steel fence on either side of the back of that property. It is at least eight foot high. With my six-foot wall on the backside, I feel if there's any problems or any robberies, anything that happens, and they have to go out the back, they don't go over that steel fence, they're going to go over that wall and onto my property, which endangers my tenants, their kids, and myself, and I live on that property also in the rear. I just do not agree, and I do not believe that this is a positive move in this neighborhood. If you have to make any changes, if we have to be here to make any changes for a special use, then it shouldn't be allowed. It just shouldn't be allowed. It's not, it's not proper for that area right there. And if they can't park in the front, there's only three, if you have one or two employees, where are they going to park? And if they don't, they will start intruding on the neighborhood, which has happened when they had that. I'm born and raised here, been here 48 years. I've lived, I've been at this property for 25 years. I've seen what has happened in the past there. I know I've lived with it. By erecting these fences, it took myself and the property owners, with cooperation from the City of Las Vegas and Metro Police, a year to clean out that alleyway, because before, there was a fence erected there, and it brought in crime, it brought in the homeless, and it brought in drug use in that alleyway. It took a combined effort of all of us, a year, including me personally, scrubbing down that alleyway to get rid of the urine and the feces smell and what's going on. Since they've erected this, in this short time of not even a month, we already have homeless back there. I've already seen drug use back there, and I think this is the worst thing for the neighborhood, because what you're doing is bringing it back that we fought so hard for a year, year and a half to get rid of, is immediately coming back by these people putting that up. I thank you for your time.
I've got a question, if you don't mind, over here. I know this is, this is a personal issue, and I know that, and I don't want to be combative on this, but just a couple of questions to help me understand.
Yes, sir.
The building is vacant right now.
Yes, sir.
And you're having problems with it.
No, no, they've, they've been doing work inside, and since they've been there, I've had problems with it. Before, you see, by...
Okay, okay, but if, let me just...
Yes, sir.
We have an existing building, we have existing parking, we have everything existing. If, if we don't allow somebody to go in there, what would you suggest happened with that property? What do you want us to do to help you? Because I don't believe the answer of not allowing anything and letting that building sit vacant is not the correct answer. It may be what you want now or are asking for, but it won't be what you want in a year. So...
I agree. What I would like is to have something other than, you know, when I looked at this, I looked at it as it was going to be, a second-hand jewelry to me almost meant like a pawn shop. I thought in my mind, a pawn shop in that area is not right, because it, in case of a holdup, in case, I know it's a long shot, but I'm looking at every possibility. In case there is a holdup in that area, I'm afraid it endangers me and my tenants especially, because if they go out the back entrance, there's eight foot on this side and this side, and six foot on this side, it's going to endanger the tenants in my front building that, I just don't want somebody to be in there that is already having a negative impact on, and I think by doing that, and the bumps and everybody coming back in, it doesn't affect just me. There's many people that border that, that alleyway behind... There's many people that border that alleyway behind there that are also affected.
Okay, okay, so like back to my original question.
Yes, sir.
If it's not the Gold Exchange, what do you want to see go in there?
Well, you know-
What can we approve there? What can we, because obviously, we can't do anything but listen and hear the items that come before us.
I understand.
So I mean, if Lenny, the story that I got from Ms. Scar was that this gal generally works alone, and she has limited hours, am I correct, Lenny? Ms. Scar, excuse me.
Yes, she's a retired nurse and has had some health issues. She travels twice a month down to California for treatments.
Okay, so again, what would you want us to approve there if it's not this?
Well, listen, you know, I've had that property for 25 years. You put a massage parlor there, and there's a lot of other, there's a cash loan place, there's a lawyer's office, there's a lot of tile place at the end. So you've got a variety. I've never come before you, before.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is another massage parlor and-
Oh, no, I would probably be here then too because, you know why? Let me tell you, the impact, the massage parlor-
Yeah, because you and I, we're going around again. I think we have this, you're not understanding me, I'm not understanding you, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I just, no, I'm trying to figure this out, you know, because I get two buttons up here, yes and no.
But I want you all to understand that you all go home and you don't live, I live with this 24 hours a day. I've had to walk my property in that alley and pick up used needles. I've had to replace windows because of broken windows by throwing bottles at it. What I'm saying is, they created the same environment that's been there that we took so hard to take out, and it's nothing against these people.
What was the business there before this one?
There's a jewelry and mineral, and he had it across the street. He had that also. So he had expanded into that building, and people would go in there and see. That's why I know the parking on the side wasn't inadequate. But that owner came to me and the neighborhood as a group, and he would check with us and see if it was okay, every move he made, including erecting those fences. These people haven't done anything with the neighborhood to try to work with us. But I can tell you, it's totally inaccurate on the side for people to park. So he gave up the building. He kind of moved everything across the street to his other ones.
Okay, well, maybe to get this thing moving, the thing for us to do would be to condition this, that a block wall separating your property and the applicant's property be either constructed, a new wall constructed to some height that is agreeable. You guys can work that out between now and city council or something like that because the biggest issue I think you have is somebody robbing that place and coming out the back door and going over your piece.
The biggest issue I have is what's happening right now in the moment.
Maybe that's the solution that we can craft here.
Commissioner Dunham, I think there's an existing eight-foot wall already there. Right.
It is a six-foot wall at this time.
That's what I heard, was an existing six-foot wall. You can't add block to it.
Oh, you're saying maybe go from six to eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they've gone eight foot on either side, so it does make mine shorter. I do know in the past, when that was there, this is what would happen.
Well, I'll give you about 10 seconds, then we're going to close the public hearing.
The homeless and the drug addicts would come through my property to jump the wall because my six-foot wall was shorter than those other ones, and they had about the same fencing up before, and that's why it was torn down so that the police could look down that alleyway and clear it out, and that's my biggest concern.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Yes, I have.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Just one question through the chair. The staff report shows the provided parking to be a total of 10 spaces, while the neighbor says there's more like three. Could you explain the discrepancy?
There's four spaces in the front, a handicap which sits on the west side of the doorway, and then three regular parking spaces in front of where the trees are. Between this building and the massage parlor on to the east, there is a driveway to the back, and we have two additional parking spaces back there, so that makes six. And then we have room for two spaces that I believe come very close to meeting city code. They're like 17 and a half feet long instead of 18, and then a couple that are more like 16 and a half feet long along that side. So those would have to be for compact only or motorcycles or whatever. So we have six full-size parking spaces and then four that would be labeled as compact If I could address real quickly-
Yeah, because the rendering that I see, if it's, if north is to the top, it sure doesn't look like the ones there on the side of the street that Santa Rita, which would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of those parking spaces, would really fit there because of the sidewalk.
There-
What?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the staff reported, it said that we are required to have six full-size parking spaces, is that correct?
That is correct.
And we do have those six full-size parking spaces.
That is also correct.
And so the ones on the side, that is what is existing there now. The ones that are labeled on what you have in your packet are the existing parking spaces as they are striped on the property today. I think in reality, I have partially agree with the gentleman that was up here. I think it would probably be best if there was indeed four compact spaces instead of the number that's shown on that.
So if he goes with four compact spaces, that would give you a total of how many? Four, is that what you're saying? Because when I look to the back, to the north side, you've got parking spaces number 10 and 11. If I understood the complaints, they're the ones that have eight-foot wrought iron fences that would prohibit them being used.
The wrought iron gates are at each end of her property. The reason those, there's two reasons that she put up those fences. One is, when she purchased the building, there actually was human feces by her backyard. And a couple of buildings down to the east, the owner of that building has told her that he has allowed homeless people to stay on his property. He's using them as his security. And so she wanted to keep that off of her property. And the other problem she has encountered is, she's had some conversations with the owner of the massage parlor next door to her, to the east, about not having that person's employees use her parking spaces. And evidently, the owner of the massage parlor felt that she did not need to listen to that. So she put up that gate on the other side, the fence on the other side, to keep the massage parlor employees from using my client's property for their parking, so that she would have her parking left for herself and her clients. So she has a fence and a gate that opens onto Santa Rita, and then there's the driveway between her building and the massage parlor. So you can pull in off of Sahara and go between the buildings and access those two parking spaces in the back, and then she can open the gate. It would be, you know, for herself and if she had another employee or whatever to park back there.
Wow. Nice dance job.
Any more questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on this item. Item 28.
I'll make the motion on item number 28, SUP 27082, move for approval subject to all conditions.
May I ask, did you wish the condition with regard to the eight-foot wall?
You mean adding an eight-foot wall?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I don't think that's necessary.
Commissioner Stein, do you think it'd be prudent to come back and review this after a specific time to see how it's going?
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine. I'd add that. A one-year-
Want to put a one-year on it?
Yeah, one-year on it.
And then a public hearing.
I think-
Public hearing, I think.
Public, since-
Yeah, and I'd like to have, so the neighbor will get some comfort.
From the issuance of the business license?
If I may, that would be a one-year review, add a public hearing of the planning commission from, yes, the issuance of the business license.
That's acceptable.
Motion on the floor, please cast your vote for approval with added condition. And that motion has passed with Commissioner Trowbridge voting no, and Commissioner Truesdale abstaining.
Thank you.
Now go forward to the city council on May 7.
Item 29, SDR 27226, applicant owner Spinnaker Home LLC, request for a site development plan review for a 100-lot, single-family residential development with access on Whispering Sands Drive on the southwest corner of Grand Teton Drive and Tenaya Way.
Mr. Chairman, upon the annexation of this property in the City of Las Vegas, the City of Las Vegas honored the previous approval in the county for the subdivision and tentative map. Upon submission of the tentative map, the access to the property changed to Whispering Sands Drive rather than Tenaya Way. This constitutes a major change in the site development review plan and requires review by the planning commission. In regards to the plan itself, staff finds it appropriate and recommends approval.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Chris Kemfer here on behalf of the applicant Spinnaker Homes. Staff has said it perfectly well, which is that this particular project was originally approved in Clark County at this density, and when it came over as part of annexation, we had the entrance originally on Tenaya because we were unable to work out some drainage issues with the Gilcrees folks who are on the other side of Tenaya. We were required to move the entrance down to Whispering Sands. We have met with the neighbor who owns substantially all of the land to the north of us. There are a couple of things that we would, we just discussed today, or they would have been conditions previously given to staff, which is that lots 95 and 96, as shown on this plant, we would agree to be single-story. Those are the two lots, if we can go to the overhead. Those are the two lots that are essentially immediately across from the residence of Ms. Lizenbart. Also, we would agree that despite the fact that the school has stamped concrete essentially along Grand Teton, its entire section of Grand Teton, Ms. Lizenbart has asked that we put 20 box trees on the outside of our development along Grand Teton. Now, we've agreed to do that, but there are some things that we need to make clear. Public Works must approve of those tree wells. Our engineer is here, and what he tells us is that the flows are quite substantial going down Grand Teton, and that is why the school was required to use stamped concrete instead of other landscaping. Now, whether or not they could or should have done something differently, we originally matched what the school did immediately adjacent to us. So if Public Works can, would in fact approve of those tree wells, we can show that they won't affect flows because, as I say, this is, this area has some rather severe flows that run down the street, and if those tree wells won't affect that, and if we're not required to dedicate additional land as a result of putting these tree wells in, then we don't have a problem with it. We just want to make sure we don't agree to a condition tonight that Public Works says, "Thank you very much, but we don't want those tree wells where you're proposing to put them because it affects flows." But if we can get Public Works to sign off on that, we have no problem at all with putting 20 trees along our northern boundary on Grand Teton. And so we would respectfully request your approval of the new site development review, which again, essentially, just changes the entrance from Tenaya to Whispering Sands.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this item, please come forward.
I think Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. This goes to show though, number one, if you'd rip out this whole damn thing and put in 2,000 trees to absorb the flow, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Put the orchard back, huh?
Sharon Lizenbart, 7280 Grand Teton. I am the neighbor that Chris has so joyfully helped me resolve some of these articles. I brought one picture to show you.
Just put it right on the center. Perfect.
Can, if you'll get in on that, this is when I drilled my well over 40 years ago, and you can see how the development has come around my original piece of property. So having been out there as many years as I have, I have seen the flows, I have seen the floods, I have seen where the water goes. I have seen, my property in fact was developed prior to the Gilcrees Orchard moving their trees across the street from me. In that light, I am hoping that staff will concur with Mr. Kemfer and allow us to do something better with that trail system. I told Mr. Kemfer that I wouldn't need to come up here, but because it needs to have staff discuss whether or not the trees can come, I chose to make a short statement. I went around within about a mile of this property today, above it, below it, to the left of it, to the right of it, there are landscape corridors, not only on the exterior of developments, but in the trail system. The only piece that has stamped concrete is the CCSD. When that occurred, I personally watched the flood channel be filled in with bulldozers, which forced the flood across the Gilcrees land because for the 40 years I've been there, it never once had a trickle through it. So with that in mind, with the new Spinnaker project and the wide, the road going where it belongs, the flood waters that are generated above and go below are going to have an adequate place to go within the street. This is a picture immediately west of the Spinnaker property, which is fully landscaped with a trail, within 100 feet or so. No, it'd be a little more. It's right above the school on the corner of Grand Teton and Buffalo.
And Buffalo.
So I respectfully hope that staff will take another look at it, allow Mr. Kemfer to put in the trees to soften the stamped concrete and the wall, and enable the people that pass by there. In every single possible design of corridors for walking paths, there is not stamped concrete and block wall. There is some sort of landscaping. So if the water can flow from up above down below and not hurt anything except for right in front of the school, I would think somewhere along the line, Mr. Kemfer should be allowed to put in his trees. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
That truck looks just like the Dodge truck that was out there when they, just, I think about three weeks ago when they cleared the land, I saw those two Dodge trucks.
That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to comment? I'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Yes, one comment. One, it appears the project in total has already been accepted when the property was annexed, so I think that the staff recommendation for approval is appropriate. I would be remiss if I didn't comment though about the concept of the tree wells. I would invite everyone that's curious to go to an area of Las Vegas South called Spring Valley and walk along Rainbow and look at the tree wells that are there. While you're walking down there, be sure to watch your feet carefully, otherwise you will trip over the sidewalks that have been torn up by the roots. You've also got people that have had those roots get in on the other side of the wall and create problems for their irrigation systems and the mechanical parts of their swimming pools. So nice new trees while their babies look cute, but as they mature, they become incredibly invasive. If this is to be a city street, the city should be cautioned that there'll be lawsuits that will come in regarding the lack of maintenance of the trees. The maintenance of tree roots is an incredibly expensive process, would involve the purchase of a very expensive piece of landscaping equipment that I'm sure the city doesn't have. It's called a tree root pruner. It takes specialized training to operate it. The litany of reasons not to get involved in this goes on and on, and so I've done my duty of pointing it out. There's some drawbacks to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, that's precisely why we said we needed Public Works to say that this is acceptable.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I agree that there is some potential problems with trees, but just to see a concrete out there that the school district, their solution is, creates its own array of problems that we shouldn't deal with. We want a greener community. We want a place where people will walk, and walking on a sea of concrete and asphalt is not enjoyable. Birds don't sit on the fence and chirp, they chirp in trees. Birds don't sit on the fence and chirp, they chirp in trees. This orchard is, what's, what's happened through this quarter is, we can't build enough parks to, to replace what we lost by, by having this all ripped out of here. And it was a very affordable amenity, and, and we didn't have flood issues. So now we've, we've got unexpected consequences on everything through here, from the school district and now here. I, I would hope we could come up with some, a landscape quarter like it, it was discussed and try to address some of the concerns out here, because there won't be much left of this orchard, even remember it at this rate.
May I make one more comment?
Thank you.
Just one comment.
The public hearing is closed. Let me, I'll indulge you, but let me...
It is a walking trail.
Let me see if there's any more questions, and I'll give you another, any more question or comments from the commissioner? Ms. Lizenbart, I'll give you a...
Just one second. One thing I forgot to add, it isn't just an amenity outside of a development, it is on the trail system plan as a walking trail, which might be a different consideration.
Yeah. And just another note, that area, that, that stretch is becoming even more popular for walking and all kind of recreational activities. I actually live out in that area, so, and I know to the, on the north side of, of Grand Teton, it's pretty much landscaped all the way up with the berm and the trees and so forth, so I think there's some way we can do the same thing on the other side. Comments, questions, motion from the, from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Well, Public Works, do you have anything to say about some of the concerns?
Sure, I can add some stuff to that. The woman is correct, that's a multi-use transportation trail established on the city's trails plan, which certainly has specific landscape requirements tied to the fact that it is one of our public trail alignments. So I would defer to planning, just to give you the details of what kind of landscaping is expected within that corridor, but I would assume they need to comply with, with the landscaping requirements of the trail. As far as the trees affecting the flows, I would think that's a minimal concern. They have submitted the drainage study, and I can, you know, get into detail and confirm before the city council meeting whether or not that's a problem. Oh, does it go to the city council?
But what I was, was commenting about were tree wells, I'd envision wall notches, like along the Rainbow in, in Spring Valley. That's a different issue than having trees along a established trail.
Exactly, and in, in this case, certainly what, the standard trail, trail is a five-foot landscape path, where a normal sidewalk would be the ten-foot concrete path and then another five-foot area of landscape. So I wouldn't picture the notch out, it'd more be in the five-foot area.
Yeah. Well, with that understood, I'm ready to make a motion then.
If I may, for your consideration, I have two additional conditions. One would be that lots ninety-five and ninety-six on the site plan dated three eleven oh eight shall be limited to one story or twenty feet, whichever is less, and an additional condition that twenty, twenty-four inch box trees shall be added on the subject property exterior to the perimeter wall along Grand Teton as approved by the Department of Public Works.
Okay, so with the addition of those two conditions, in regards to item number twenty-nine, site development review twenty-seven two twenty-six...
And did the applicant agree?
Yes, ma'am, and yes, Mr. Chairman, we do agree.
Thank you.
And I'd make a recommendation for approval subject to all staff conditions as amended.
Motion on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion has been approved on item twenty-nine.
And that'll be final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the city clerk within ten days.
Thank you all very much.
Item thirty, abeyance, public hearing, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, discussion and possible action to amend Title nineteen point zero six, special purpose and overlay districts to update the design review process, revise maps and update signage standards for the casino center scenic byway and entertainment district overlays. Dan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, as you'll remember, we discussed this text amendment last month, and there were concerns relative to what we were proposing for the language relative to transparent building wrap. What we are proposing is the handout that I gave you earlier this evening relative to building wrap, which would add a few additional criteria relative to the approval of that type of signage. Number one, it would only be allowed on occupied buildings or where a valid gaming license is held. Number two, it would need to be applied to the building in such a manner that it's consistent with the architecture of the building. So in other words, it has to fit in with the design of the building rather than just be slapped up there haphazardly. Number three, there would be a time limit of a hundred and eighty days on the wrap signage. And then number four, that's, the wrap signage would need to be approved by the design review committee, so that there will be oversight and review of any applications for wrap signage. In addition, Mr. Evans has also requested that there be language added to this text amendment that states something to the effect that planning and Public Works shall staff the design review commission, because oftentimes there are questions relative to the signage proposed in the downtown casino overlay district and in the entertainment district. And so again, we will have staff members who serve that design review committee. Those are the changes that are proposed, since you saw this amendment last month. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take those.
If I may just add one thing on the gaming, it's unrestricted gaming.
Correct, sorry.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody for or against this item, please come forward. Sing, sing none will close the public hearing. Does that mean, no Tony Braxton, the life-size photos of the mayor on the side of the building?
Not other approved by the committee.
That's right.
I just want to make a disclosure, I do own property in the downtown area. It, I don't believe it's affected by this ordinance or this, the changes here, so I will vote on this item. And, and I do appreciate staff going back and looking at inserting the land, you know, the limitation on the building wraps being limited to unrestricted gaming sites that are occupied, because I think that, that addresses where things should be, not where we'll have unoccupied wrapped buildings just to... It'll be a disaster for the downtown if we want that route, but, so I will support this, and if there are any other comments or questions, I'll make a motion.
Go right ahead.
And I'd make a motion to approve TXT two six six five one, noting the changes from our last meeting that dealt with a hundred and eighty days, the restricted, unrestricted gaming sites.
Motion on the floor for approval.
And the Public Works involvement in the committee.
Of item thirty, please cast your vote. That motion has been approved.
Now go forward to council and ordinance forum.
Okay. Item thirty-one, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and Commissioner. For some time, I've been real concerned about the limitations on height on these, on, like, like we just had one that had a height restriction of one story or twenty feet. And, okay, two stories or twenty. And I want, and the reason for that is this, as the price of heating just keeps skyrocketing, we're going to have to find different ways of, of heating and cooling the houses. And this is why we have these sustainable architecture lectures down at, at UNLV, and they're having another in a couple of, of months. But when you get your dwell magazines on this month, if you, on page, page one hundred to, I guess it's about one hundred and five, one hundred and four, it, it shows, well, let me go back just a bit, about a year ago, we had a doctor, Susan Rolf, R O A F, that, that spoke at a lecture, and she did studies in the ancient times in the Mideast of how they cooled their buildings back then, and how they could survive. Their buildings were actually cooler than they can make them now with mechanical air conditioning. And it's, it's just amazing, for, for nothing. And they brought this out, and, and when you read the dwell, it's called a wind catcher. And it looks like you can make, and some of them look like just large chimneys, but they're vortexed, and when the wind passes over them, it brings in cold air from, but Ed explains it in, in the magazine. Other, another thing, I, she, she has a web address, she's from Oxford, England, but she's on the internet, and it's s dot R O A F E B T internet dot com. And, and if you could check those out and, and be, and, and just project this out a few more years to, to how we can, how we're going to achieve a better energy balance with the homes. And, and this is, like I said, it's, it's a green design, it costs absolutely nothing. But when we restrict our, I'll, I'll wrap it up. When we restrict, we restrict, I think it takes about thirty-four feet in order to get that vortex, as, as heat rises, it creates a, a, a bigger vacuum underneath, and the heart, larger the chimney, the better it is. And you need thirty-four feet is basically what you need. But if you restrict it to twenty, you see, then, you know, it's going to come back and plague us later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, that was two homes out of a hundred that had that restriction.
Oh, no, I just, I just brought that up. Thank you, Margaret.
Flynn?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I have a couple of informational items that I'd like to present to you this evening. As you may have noticed, we distributed two new master plan elements to you. Let me give you just a little bit of background. Nevada revised statutes includes a total of eighteen elements that need to be included in our master plan. The city of Las Vegas has never been in compliance with that requirement. We currently have eleven elements, out of which four need to be updated, and we're currently working on another five elements, and two of those you have before you this evening, which will be under consideration on your agenda in May. One of our principal focuses in the planning department is to bring ourselves into compliance with NRS relative to the master plan, so we've been very, working very hard on that. We have the community design element and also the school facilities element, which address two of the things that we need to do to come into compliance with NRS. The community design element is intended to address standards and principles governing the subdivision of land and also suggestive patterns for community development. So that's the intent of that particular element. And then relative to the school facilities element, it's intended to show the general locations of current and future schools. And one of the things that we've done in the schools element is actually go a little bit beyond what NRS requires and talk about how we can work together with the school district in looking at future facilities and the design of future facilities. So again, we're just presenting this as an informational item. We are working very diligently to bring ourselves into compliance with NRS requirements to the master plan. So please take some time to read through those, and we'll discuss that item next month. The second item that I'd like to discuss with you this evening is relative to the American Planning Association Conference, which will be held here in Las Vegas at the end of the month. We were just on a conference call with APA National this morning. They tell us that currently there are over sixty-one hundred people registered for the conference, which is more than they had in Philadelphia last year. Also, they have over one thousand students who are registered for the conference. And when you consider that we don't have very many planning schools that close to us, that really is quite an impressive number. So we're looking forward to a terrific conference. Some of you have been coerced by us, in fact, all of you have been coerced by the planning department to participate in one form or another in the conference. I'm going to be talking directly to those who I've twisted the arms of to participate in the orientation tour. We have just finished producing the booklet that will go along with the orientation tour. I have a copy of that, one copy only right now. The booklet is at the printers right now, being printed, but this will go to all of the participants who are on the tour, and basically it describes the tour route and the different sites that we'll see along the way. We do have a dry run of the orientation tour this Saturday, for those of you who have been selected to be our guides and hosts, and we'll be meeting at the Paris Hotel at eight thirty AM. Also, I have a current list of assignments when you will be doing the orientation tour. If you need that, I'll be able to provide that to you. One thing to note, there will be two tour guides on each tour, so you'll need to coordinate amongst yourselves in terms of who's giving what part of the presentation, and I can talk to you individually about that. But again, we do appreciate your participation in the conference. We do want to show what we're doing here in Las Vegas and all the wonderful things that are going on, so we appreciate your efforts in helping us do that. Thank you very much.
Just to make clear, there are four of you, Commissioners Steinman, Truesdale, Trowbridge, and Quinn...
Who's the leader?
...that are participating in Flynn's orientation tours that are on Sunday and Monday. Five of you will be participating in the mock planning commission, in addition to Dr. Scott, as we say, on, on Tuesday. And we will have, very shortly, your, each one of you will have an itinerary of the events in which we have coerced you, as Flynn says, to participate in... Isn't it Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Monday is training, Tuesday of the conference is the actual session. Right. Right. Tuesday... Yes. Yeah. Okay, so thank you. I just wanted Flynn to give this presentation to you as a, a member of the public this evening, and again, we'll get the rest of the schedule off to you shortly. Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Not at all. Meeting is adjourned.